Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight. We thank you for everyone that's made the special effort to come out to participate. We thank you again for the beautiful day you've given to us and a little break in the weather here as we can re-energize as we go towards spring. Father, we just pray that you give us respect for each other tonight in our comments and the difference of opinions and that you'll help us with only the wisdom that you can give and the discernment that you can give to help us make the right decisions for this community. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen, all right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Boswick.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Matonan.
Here.
Commissioner Numicek.
Here.
Mayor Mackey.
Here.
First item on our agenda is public comment. Somebody's got to want to talk. Bob Snort. Bob, take the mic, please, Bob.
My name is Bob Snort. I'm a fireman here in Gladstone. I'm here on behalf of the Gladstone Fire Department, its volunteers, and support of all the public safety officers. The reason I'm here tonight is to ask your permission to put together a committee to put out bids so that our department can purchase a new fire truck that would replace the 26-year-old GMC. The GMC was purchased in 1989, but it was a 1988-year model and it was a demo that was bought. This truck is extremely tired and we fear that it could break down at a fire at any time. Replacing this truck isn't something we want to do, it's something that we have to do. Just this past year, thousands of dollars had to be put into the GMC just to have it pass the pump testing and inspection. I could sit here and tell you all kinds of things that are wrong with the truck, but I don't believe we have that much time. Most departments that have trucks of this model have taken them out of service. It's not an option for our department to go without two Class A pumpers in town. The majority of our population and older construction and fire threat are in the downtown area. We feel that even if we get the go-ahead to purchase a new truck, it will take at least eight months to a year before that truck will be put into service. Just an example of the average age of the trucks in the three surrounding departments is as follows: Escanaba Township, Brampton Township, and Masonville Township, their truck, the average age of their trucks are 12 to 14 years. The average age of our trucks is 22 years, as our newest truck is 18 years old. If we don't replace our oldest truck now, we could be battling a situation where we need to replace both of the trucks. Our department, again, is here to get your blessing to put together a committee to research and then put out bids for a new Class A pumper. Thank you for your time.
For the commissioners' benefit, at the last meeting, I advised that I invited Commissioner Gay to come along with me to a volunteer fireman's meeting. Sergeant Larson was there as well, Public Safety Department, and Director Guyer. I thought we had a really, really good meeting. I had to leave early for a parish council meeting, but Commissioner Gay stayed on longer and he actually got to see the, our second truck in operation. And he sent me some text messages. Your eyes were kind of opened, I guess. And I really felt bad, in a certain way, at the fireman's meeting because the comment was made, "We don't come down there very often and that's our fault. We need to do that." That never happened when I worked here, so that's not going to happen again. Commissioner Gay and I talked about helping you guys figure out how we're going to get a second truck. I think there's probably some ideas we can put together. I'm in favor of forming a committee. I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel, but I hope you guys feel like you're welcome down here. I know you haven't always felt that way, and there's a lot of firemen in our audience tonight, so... Any other comments?
It was eye-opening to see the capacity at which that truck, the 1988, by the way, in 1988, I think I was in sixth grade.
I cut the check for that truck.
So it was kind of eye-opening as to what needed to be done before the truck rolls out and the amount of time that passed before you could actually drive the truck towards an incident. I think we had a good meeting. I think we have some good ideas, and I would be in favor of forming the committee.
I'll support it.
I don't know that we're looking for formal action tonight on that. We're looking for if anybody has a problem with it. I think it's pretty obvious that we can go forward. I'd be willing to help serve on that if you need help. If not, keep us posted.
I think the last time we had a committee, we had, I think it was Randy Scott. I think there was one other public safety officer and maybe three firemen.
That was the Pierce. That was built from the ground up, literally. That's not a stock bumper. This truck you're talking about was a stock bumper that they took around as a demo and we bought it cheap.
Yeah.
I've been here before when fire trucks got old and we've let this happen twice.
I think Mark Guyer was the third one that was on that, Scott or Paul, I'm pretty sure.
Bob, what do you think it's going to cost about?
I, we were talking about that and saying ballpark figure, probably around $400,000.
The $400,000 included the addition, or actually the upgrade of all the SCBA, the self-contained breathing apparatus, the tanks and stuff like that currently. What I was looking at was pretty old antiquated technology compared to what's there, which has multiple issues, working with, especially now, we're working with Escanaba Township. They don't have the same types of equipment, so if these guys needed a bottle, they couldn't just, they couldn't just switch, you know, because they're all on the newer technology. There are multiple issues with the duration of, duration of air in the tank and the old ones compared to the new ones, also weight, so that comes into play with fatigue, which is already significant when fighting a fire in full turnout here, so...
As I said, when I worked here, this happened one time before and it turned into a bit of a fiasco at the commission level. This is not going to turn into a fiasco. We're not going to point the fingers at the Public Safety Director or anything like that. Paul stretches the money as far as he can. We need to pay attention. You brought this to our attention and we need to get on top of this and make it happen, so... Thank you. See, that didn't hurt.
Thank you, guys.
Is there any other, Mr. Earhart?
My name is Bill Earhart. I'm treasurer of the Gladstone Yacht Club, and I'm here to request the use of your 501(c)(3) tax...
That's on our agenda already, Bill.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, nobody told you, did they?
No.
It's coming up on our new business.
Oh, already?
This is the Hannibal Grant Request, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on. Oh, Eric, our water department supervisor, water and wastewater, rather.
Update on what's happening out in the water and wastewater world with this nice winter we're having this year. So far this year, we've had 151 houses that have froze up that we've thawed or have, we have eight, there's eight or nine of them that we have temporary services, including a business. The Yacht Club is one of them, one of the first ones. We also have 80 other let runs that are going right now just to prevent the freezing or to keep the water running in the mains. We have three water mains that have frozen or are frozen right now. The Fourth Avenue one by Knocker's House is froze, that goes to public safety. Third Avenue North by the REA, and we had one up at the Lake Bluff Retirement Community that we thawed out already. The wastewater, we've had 10 frozen services that we know of. A lot of the people have been getting it thawed out, hiring their own contractors, so there was probably double that amount, I would guess. Four frozen lift station laterals out in Kipling, all four of them. We're pumping and hauling right now. The wastewater guys were doing it, but we're just running out of time to do it. It was taking the whole day for, to go and pump out each one, so we have a contractor that's going and pumping those four lift stations out each day. And we've had five frozen mains, and all of them are open as we speak, but we have to keep running warm water down them on alternate days. Special thanks out to John Clute and Tiny at the cement plant. We've been getting hot water from those guys, so... So last month, I only have the, the last month figures, we had about $500 hours of overtime last month. We've been working from dawn to dusk. We don't thaw at night, as you heard on the radio what happened in Ishamene. We've had a couple small fires, but we've, because it's light out, we've caught them. Last month, we credited 2.5 million gallons of water, which was about $9,600 worth of water and $8,600 worth of wastewater. And the plant's running about twice its normal rate right now, probably a little more than that, so... I just wanted to remind everybody out there that if they have a let run, just because it's nice out, don't stop running your water because it'll freeze again, so...
This is as good a time as any. Several, Market County and Delta County and the city of Escanaba and the city of Market, I believe, have considered declaring a disaster, and it was something I was going to bring up tonight anyway, so this kind of dovetails in really nice. And of course, the legislature has publicly gone on record saying that they're looking at, but they haven't, as far as I know, come up with any money yet for the additional snow plowing and the water thawing, so maybe there's some relief coming or some help for all that overtime and the let run of water.
Yeah, we're gonna, I just felt that was a little early because we don't know the worst might be yet to come, so...
Well, our emergency preparedness coordinator says May could be the worst when the frost starts coming out. You could break pipes.
We're meeting with, Darla and I are meeting with him on Friday, so...
Thanks, Eric.
Any questions? Thanks.
Any other public comment? Now we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is the city commission regular meeting minutes of February 24, 2014, the parks and recreation regular minutes of February 4, 2014, and payment of bills.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Gay, supported by Commissioner Numicek. Approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. We have two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is proposed ordinance number 593, parking and storage of recreational vehicles and recreational equipment. I hope everybody remembers that we directed staff to come up with an ordinance because we received some complaints about recreational vehicles, and this has been developed by our staff in response to some public complaints. I also understand there's some folks who feel that we're moving too fast on this matter, so that's probably what we're going to hear for comments tonight, but our staff was basically directed to take some action after a problem was brought before us, so... With that, first, I guess I'll start with the city manager.
Um...
Unless you want Paul to...
I don't have anything to add. I guess if you want to recap before you open the public hearing, what do you want to happen before the public hearing? Because we already had a forum. We received comments on that.
Let me ask, has everybody had a chance to read the proposed ordinance? Or does anybody, okay. Well, then I think we'll probably go to public comment.
Okay.
So we'll take public comments on the proposed ordinance.
Anything to add?
Please identify your name and your address and that kind of stuff.
Butch Irving, 525 Minnesota Avenue. Back in 2008, there was a planning commission wanting to change RV ordinance. The commissioners voted to have it go back to the planning commission. At that time, we started a subcommittee. I was on it, Hugo was on it, Grant was on it, and there's quite a few others. We only met once or twice. Then all of a sudden, they called us up and said, "Forget it, they're dropping it." We said, "Okay." We never thought no more about it. And now it's coming back up again, which is, it's fine, but I can't figure out why they never got a hold of the subcommittee again to say, "Hey, we're bringing this back up now, let's get the subcommittee together." Nobody told us nothing. We didn't hear nothing at all. I really think that was really unfair, but does anybody know want to answer why or...
Well, I was going to come back to that when you're done, Butch.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I have some notes here from that meeting from another commissioner, Craig Loroman, when he was on it. Just some of his thoughts, just because he was commissioner, so I wanted you to say. Actually, this was to Hugo, maybe he'll remember it, but... "Our residents do not need any more regulations, but the public safety needs some means to deal with the complaints that have occurred. In a perfect world, one neighbor could talk to the other and work it out, but it's not happening, so everyone has to regulate because of a few. I would like to see the planning commission really look at the specific complaints were. Based on what I heard from Paul Guyer, the main complaints were parking in front of someone's house, parking all summer long, cords running across the sidewalk. There may be a few more, but nobody said anything more about it." But his reaction to that was with the four items, he says, "He was in favor of, 'If you can park your trailer on a street not attached to the vehicle, but it has to be in front of your property. If your neighbor allows you to park in front of his, that's fine too,'" he said. He also marked the trailer so it would be allowed to park a trailer on the street. If you park, you can park anywhere in your yard, front or back. This shouldn't even be unlisted. Shouldn't even be on the list, why we can't park anywhere in our yard. You can not run cords across the sidewalk. That's a hazard. We all agree with that. If there's any hazard, you can't do it at all. Or hoses, we should say, unless you're just getting your camper ready for the weekend. Maybe you need, you know, I'd say 12, 24 hours just to, just to get your refrigerator going and stuff like that, but, and you cannot live in your trailer. We have guests, you can have guests sleep in your camper, plug it in, cannot hook up the sewage. That's just some of his comments that he had here. I just wanted to read it to let you know that we did talk about this a lot before. In the beginning of the ordinance, that is to enhance the value of the residential district, protect property values. So if my trailer is parked on the street or in my yard, this will bring down my property value? That hasn't happened in the last four years that I lived there, 30 years camping. So I don't see where they come up with this where it's going to make a difference. My taxes keep going up, so my property value must be going up, so... There's other things I think that they could look at besides us. How about the smell of a blacktop plant? Smell of sewage on Fourth Street, Stink Hill? Why don't they fix stuff like that or pave the alleys? Houses not painted. I got houses by me that haven't been painted for 30 years. Nothing's being done. Grass is not being cut. Doesn't look worse to have a camper there. I hate to say this, guys, but some of the fish axes, they look pretty shabby too in their yard, but nobody says nothing about those. Talking with Mr. Guyer, see, most of the complaints were parking in front of someone's else's house. Simple, you gotta park in front of your own house. Cords running across the sidewalk, no more cords for less than 24 hours, and it must be marked. We talked one time about putting them rubber bumpers over the cords so if somebody goes across the street, you know, they don't trip over it or nothing. All that was looked into at that time, too. I think Mr. Guyer, if I got this right, he said one camper was parked on one side of the street and one on the other, so the cars couldn't go through, okay? Well, what I'm saying, if the public safety thinks it's a hazard, you go up to them and say, "You got to move it, it's a hazard." It's up to them. If they call it a hazard, we got to move it. But he doesn't have nothing now to tell them that, that it's a hazard. Am I right, Paul? You don't have nothing right now, right? Nothing, so, but... Did we have any accidents related to the trailers that were parked? Anybody know of any accidents we had? You do? Okay, that's the first. There was one, okay. Okay, that's, okay, that's the first one I heard about. I did ask three retired policemen from Gladstone if they ever had any complaints. None of them ever had a problem with campers. I've been paying taxes and utilities for 40 years. I comply whatever the city asks. All I want to do is park my trailer on the street, sometimes during the camping season. For all the people living in town, I don't know how many we got right here in town, but if we're only getting a dozen complaints, if most, okay, that's not that much for all the people that are living in town. I voted for most of you because I think you are for the people, not just for a few people. I hope you vote for, help us out here for most of the people. If you live in town, have a camper boat, you were told that you could not park on the street or in your yard anymore, what would you do? If you guys had a camper or a trailer right now and you couldn't park in your yard, where would you put it? The only thing I could come up, come up with is you did either have to sell your boat, sell your camper, or move.
You realize you can't park it in your yard, it just doesn't.
No, we'll go over that, sir. They got some, they got some stipulations in there. I got to be eight feet from the sidewalk, eight feet from the...
There's some setbacks, yeah, but you're parking your driveway.
If you don't have a driveway.
Let's just, let's just, let's let Butch finish your points.
Okay. Okay. I like to say I've been living here for 40 years. I like it here. I don't want to have to move because an ordinance and parking in a street that I'm, that I, a street that I helped pay for if it breaks up, I guess I got to pay for the blacktop there where I'm parking my camper, but I can't even park it there. Something wrong there, too, I guess. Then I had a question for you guys. Can the commission change anything or does it have to go back to the planning commission? Or can we have a subcommittee again? Just some questions I got. It's enough houses for sale in Gladstone. Can't we work together on this? After all, we're here on playground, we need our toys to do this. We are not a retirement town. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Butch. Anybody else? This gentleman, this gentleman, Butch?
Eric Huesby, 1403 Wisconsin Avenue, Gladstone, Michigan. I kind of agree with the other guy there. He, I think you guys are casting a wide net to catch a few fish. You're worried about enhancing your value of your property or it going down. I have two houses that are vacant that I can see from my back porch, and if you want to know what makes prices go down, that makes prices go down. If I could have somebody, a family living in each one of those things with a camper, I'd take it every day. Now, a lot of these things here I just don't agree with. Say a guy has a pickup truck and he has a sliding camper, and he's coming to Gladstone. He pulls down Main Street, parks at the dewdrop, he can get a ticket for that, and he can't not allow to do that. And when Commissioner said, "What if your driveway, you can park in your driveway?" Well, my driveway is like this. There's no way I could park my camper or my boat in my trailer. It would roll out onto the street. The only way I could do it is if I brought an excavator in and cut out my whole backyard and redid it, and I don't think I can afford to do that. There's another thing here. It says you can rent a storage area from somebody else in town to park your camper. And I would think that if you wanted to rent a storage spot on somebody's lot, if you think one or two campers, it makes the property value go down. What happens if a guy has a corner lot that's vacant and he parks a dozen campers in there? What is that going to do to the guy's property around there? And the best I can figure is if you're going to rent out space, would that have to be his own commercial or would you have to have a different ordinance for that? Like a storage shed ordinance?
Which section of the furniture, because it says...
Aye.
Nothing in this section shall be construed to authorize or permit a property owner to allow others to rent parking and storage space.
Well, if you allow somebody to rent parking area...
You can't do it. It would have to be a storage facility in his own as such.
Well, it doesn't say that. It just says, "Property owner." The way I read that is any property owner can rent space for your camper.
No, that's not what it says.
Well, you commissioners read that and see what you get out of it.
Well, I don't think we should have a fight about this right now.
I mean, it's pretty black and white.
Another way to read that would be, "Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed to allow or permit a property owner to allow others to rent parking or storage space on the owner's property." I mean, that's, I changed a couple words, you know, to make it a little more, but you can't, nothing in this ordinance allows someone to authorize others to park their RVs on their property. You'd have to be out of storage.
Can I ask that, just finish your points, please, and then I'm probably going to go back to staff after the public comment, give some staff comments.
Another thing is, it says, "Who's going to determine if your vehicle's in good condition?" I mean...
That's a question, but I don't know what to answer, but we'll...
I mean, that's, I might consider it's good, somebody else may consider it's not. Um, the other thing is, you know, these dimensions, how far you got to park it away from everything, but then in section H, it says you can be ticketed if you don't have adequate clearance around your vehicle. So even if you follow all this and they deem you don't have adequate distance, they can still ticket you?
I'm going to go back to staff for comments, so I, all your questions and Butch's questions, I'm going to come back to those.
Okay. That's about all I had, other than I don't believe you should, if you do this, I think people who have campers, who are families, may or may not move to this town because they can't park their camper on the street. The lots aren't that big, and you're not just affecting the town, but you're also affecting the schools, because if you lose families, you're also going to lose revenue to your schools. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Mr. View?
Steve View, 1107 Delta Avenue. I just want to throw my support towards not having this, I mean, what Butch and whoever else was talking, I think that if this, I just read it tonight, and some of the vehicles that I own probably could qualify in this, and I think it would make me leave the area to the point where I'd have to get out of the city, because I got boats for my son and stuff like that parked in my yard. And who wrote this? Was anyone in the city of Gladstone, a citizen outside of an official? Who wrote this?
We're going to, we're going to come back to staff for all the questions that came up tonight, Steve.
Oh, okay. Well, because I think it's, it looks pretty round the neck to squeeze people if we lose not to be here in our community. And I'm always pushing for people to stay in the community, and I'd like them to stay in the community, but if you lose two or three families every year because of something like this, it doesn't take long for us to keep losing revenue for the city. We need to have something set up so that people enjoy coming here. The other thing is, can citizens have a say in this or is this already final? Usually when it gets to this point, it gets pretty final, because it already went through all the steps and people put a lot of work in it. This isn't final, or is it?
Could be voted on tonight, but I'm going to come back to staff.
Okay, okay. But I just, I just want to say... But I ju, I just wanna say that I, I'm against it. There's a lot of stuff in here that's good, that we need. Don't you have a nuisance law? Do we have a nuisance law in Gladstone?
All of these things, I think, staff is, I'm gonna ask staff to step up after all the questions and...
I mean, you could have a couple of the things that really are public safety issues, put in that nuisance law, and get rid of a lot of this stuff that just handcuffs every citizen, because you can interpret this any way you want. That, I mean, I just wanted to make that comment for myself. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve. Anybody else? This gentleman right here.
My name's Matt Prasandek. I live at 101 Superior Avenue, 1001 Superior Avenue, Gladstone. Um, I don't really have much more to say on it than what's already been said, other than I oppose it. I think that there has to be further review on it, to punish the peoples and citizens of Gladstone for living in a year-round playground and having toys is, is on the border of preposterous. Um, like I said, I'm not gonna take up any of your time. I just wanted to voice my opinion of opposing that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Thompson.
Joe Thompson, 602 Montana Avenue. I'd like to urge you to take another close look at this, because, you know, reading this thing, I've got a 24-foot travel trailer, and, you know, the overall length of it's like 27 feet. I cannot park that thing in, on my lot anywhere and meet the setbacks. If I put that in the middle of my backyard, six feet from my house, it's not gonna fit. So, I won't be able to park in town at all. And, you know, right now, I store it out of, out of the city limits during the non-camping season. I only got it down there from May until September. It's gone every weekend, and, you know, if I gotta, if I gotta keep dragging this thing in and out of town, you know, it, it's just not gonna be worth it anymore. It's gonna be so much work, it won't be worth camping. You know? So, I urge you to really look at, close at this, because it, it's really limiting. Most of the lots in Gladstone are so doggone small that, you know, if you have any kind of a good-sized travel trailer, you're not gonna park it down there. Not, not with the setbacks and restrictions that you've got there. And another question I have is, is how enforceable is this ordinance gonna be? I mean, right now, we don't enforce a lot of the ordinances we have. We don't enforce the winter parking restrictions. We don't enforce shoveling sidewalks. There, there are so many ordinances we don't enforce now, to, you know, why are we gonna throw more ordinances on the people of Gladstone? You know, that's all I've got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? This lady?
Hi. I'm Melissa Egner, 1319 Minnesota Avenue, and I just wanted to throw my support for the people who have already spoken against this ordinance. I, too, myself, have a travel trailer about 25 feet in length, and I need to park it on the street, because I can't park it in my yard. It won't fit. So, I just wanted to agree with those who have spoken already and throw my support against the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? This gentleman.
Good evening. Jerry Barnhart, 403 Elm Street. And I own one of these trailers. I live on a corner lot, too, which can also sometimes be a challenge when we look at setbacks and on and on and on. I'm speaking in favor of this. Listening to many of the comments of my good friends this evening, it seems to me the crux of what has been said is a criticism here tonight is, "I cannot put my private property in the public thoroughfare, 'cause y'all are writing an ordinance." Now, I mentioned I have a travel trailer. Right now, it is inside a storage facility. I pay $60 a month to park that thing inside the storage facility, because I, too, haven't got a real convenient spot on my private property to park my private recreational toy. And I look at that as a cost of having that toy and not harassing my neighbors.
Thank you. Anybody else? I guess that's everybody. I'm not the foremost expert on how this was drafted. That was one of the questions. I know that the planning commission took this before our city commission, previous to when I was serving on the city commission. Some of my friends on the planning commission were not very happy that the city commission didn't adopt an ordinance at that point in time. The problem that some people felt we had with parking those vehicles on the street persisted, and they came back to the city commission. We directed staff to come back with an ordinance. I'm not saying that anybody is, is saying nasty things about our staff, but our staff probably couldn't care less one way or the other, but if, if we are going to push our staff to do something, they've gotta have some authority to realize they can't do a whole lot. And so, I hope that our staff doesn't feel like anybody's going after them tonight. I would like somebody on staff, if they feel like they'd answer some of the questions that were posed, because there were some questions tonight, and the commission obviously doesn't have all the answers, so would somebody feel comfortable of talking at this point in time?
Commissioners, as you stated, Mayor, we, we began this process back in like 2007, 2008, when there was complaints that were made to, to our department and to City Hall in general about some of the issues involving travel trailers and/or utility trailers parked on the road, um, in one of a number of different situations, whether it be a site problem near a corner lot, line of sight issue for traffic, uh, whether it be parked from May through November on the roads and never really moved, um, utilities across the public sidewalks which caused a hazard for pedestrians and, and whatnot. Those were all issues that we've, we've tried to deal with in the past, including, uh, some people using the RVs for semi-permanent dwellings. And I, I don't mean like two weeks, I mean like for months at a time, so we've tried to address some of those. In 2008, we did form a subcommittee. We had several meetings through the planning commission up to the city commission. The city commission, um, at that time, did not want to address the issue, um, by means of an ordinance. We did change one part of our parking ordinance at that time, which was the parking on city boulevards. We restricted that during the summer months and allowed it during the winter months to comply with the winter parking regulations. That was basically the, the change that came about from that whole RV discussion or that RV process. As you stated, there was complaints made again to the city commission, um, or concerns brought up about the issue. We were directed to go back, look at another ordinance to try to address the issues that we've seen in the past. We did have several meetings. I don't know that, Renee would know the timeline maybe better than I do. We did have citizen input, but we didn't mistake on my part, maybe not going back and looking at the citizen committee that we had before, but we did not involve that. We, we based a lot of our ordinance off what we've seen in other communities, including our sister community, Escanaba. They recently enacted an ordinance that's almost not, not quite verbatim. It's a little even stricter than ours, I believe. But the whole purpose of this, from my aspect, is that the public streets are not designed for the storage of personal property. They're designed for the temporary parking of vehicles, in which case we do have, you know, 48-hour type timelines in, in place for those. But we've never had anything to address somebody putting out a utility trailer, or a camper, or a boat trailer for months on end. That's the main issue, I guess, that I'm trying to solve. I'm trying to correct some of the things that the commission has heard in the past about the complaints that deal with aesthetic values and property values. I, I don't really have an expertise in that area. I, I can deal with the parking issue and know that the streets were not designed for long-term storage of personal property. There was, there was one comment that was made that we're not enforcing the ordinances we have now. We still write several tickets for winter parking. We're, we're trying to do the best we can on that. We are going out and looking for sidewalk violations. We have...
125, um, tickets issued this, this winter alone on sidewalk, snow removal, so...
This is our zoning administration, Renee, Baron.
We've been hitting the sidewalks. Um, this is the first year that we have pushed to do that regularly, but...
I mean, we're, we're somewhat different in, in some other communities in that, too. If you look at Kingsford and Iron Mountain, they don't require the removal of snow from sidewalks in the winter, and try to walk around in Kingsford.
This might not have been the best winter to start...
It's difficult, so... Yeah, I mean, and it's, you know, and the, and the reason we're talking about this now is that we are coming into camping season. We are coming into boating season, the time, you know, um...
Let me ask you a question, Paul. I would guess that if you didn't have to deal with it, you'd rather not, right?
I would rather not. I've, I've dealt with this since 2008, you know, and even before then. I mean, we, we've had issues before then, but we, we really tried to tackle it in '08, and it...
So, for the comment that we don't need any more regulations, I completely think that, I understand where that's coming from, but I can tell you that our staff doesn't want another regulation they have to deal with. You have enough to do.
But, but in addition to that, we have been receiving more and more complaints from citizens.
Complaints. And so, you've asked us to come up with something to help you, right?
Correct. And, and myself and our city clerk last summer took a ride up and down our city streets, and, and you gotta do a lot of bobbing and weaving to get through our city streets in the summer months. Not including all of the parking that we have going on in the boulevard with, mostly at, in the boulevards, I would say we saw fishing boats and jet skis and smaller type things.
I, I stopped taking complaint numbers in our department because, after 2008, because I, I basically told people that called and complained, and that it was something that we couldn't address, where it was really a line-of-sight issue that I could talk with the owners and get them to move it. I just, I said, "You're gonna have to talk to the city commission." They are the ones that set the policy for the city. So, I, you know, but I, I would say 40 to 50 calls every summer on different, different, some are on the same properties, some are on different, different ones that, you know, that pop up throughout the summer, but, um, you know, it's, it's something I would rather not have to deal with.
If I can back up just a little bit, when Paul was talking about how we got to this point, we did take a look at what you guys had worked on previously. We started from there. Nobody wanted to recreate the wheel. So, we took a look at where you guys had left off. We took a look at neighboring communities, and many of our neighboring communities have far stricter requirements than what, what we're asking for. I, I'm not saying that makes it better or worse, I'm just pointing that out, that many cities do not allow RVs to be stored on their, on the properties whatsoever. Many other communities don't allow temporary usage of campers and other facility, other recreational vehicles on their property for any reason. We do have a city campground. We talked about that. We kicked it back and forth. We wanted to acknowledge that this is a year-round playground. We, we tried, th, this was probably the fifth draft, and it was by far the most lenient of, you know, our first one, we'd have filled this room and probably 10 more. So, we, we really did try to address keeping it simple, making it accommodating for folks who want to have fun with boats and campers and RVs and, um, four-wheelers and everything. We, we do recognize that we are the year-round playground, but we have to have something in place to address the issues that we have. And this was the best shot that we came up with, and I'm not saying it's perfect. As with any of our ordinances, they're living, breathing documents. We make changes to them all the time. Just about every commission meeting, we're looking at changing or tweaking some of our ordinances. So, it, I, I think some of the comments we heard, um, some of them, you know, we've heard before, and some of them, um, you know, hopefully we can address or not, give, give some clear information as to answers to the questions. Um, one of the things I heard was that you couldn't park anywhere on your property. This ordinance does allow for parking on city property. There is a six-foot, I didn't bring mine up.
On your own property?
On your own property. There's a six-foot setback from a building and an eight-foot setback from a property line. You can park on the side of your property or in the back of the property. You are allowed to park in the front part of the property if it's on an established driveway, and you can keep it off, basically off the sidewalk.
I mean, if, if the city wants to, you know, we, we looked at those, we looked at the different communities, and that's what we came up with. If the city wants to look at setbacks, they certainly can. However, I mean, we have a fence ordinance in the city, because we don't want people building a fence right on top of a sidewalk. It's two feet off the property line. It's the same thought process for parking these objects, you know, in the front setbacks of houses and the side setbacks. And we know that there's gonna be problems on, with some properties. There...
We don't allow a six-foot fence in the front part of the property. That's for sightline issues. That's for giving, um, nice aesthetic feel to a neighborhood when they come in, and that's what we looked at, similar with where you're gonna put something that's taller than six feet tall.
It was, uh, it was discussed at the last meeting, what kind of enforcement would be done, um, on this ordinance. You know, anytime a new ordinance or a new traffic order comes into play, something that I'm involved with or whatever, I always direct staff to, you know, the staff in my department, and in this case, in Renee's department with Dell Johnson, um, we try to educate by either putting a flyer out with utility bills or, um, putting something on the city's website, uh, and then we go into warnings. We have red-tagged notices that we can put out and say, "We do have a new ordinance in place. You know, your, your equipment here is technically in violation of that. We're asking for compliance." If we get to the point where we're at multiple warnings to the same properties, then yes, an ordinance allows us to start issuing citations, parking citations. I don't really know where to go from here.
Well, I'm not asking you that. That's up to us. I just, I just wanted the public to know that staff is not looking to come up with another regulation, the process that you came up with, the proposed regulation for tonight, so that the commission has background and the people who are here tonight know where this came from. We've gotta make the decision, unless there's something more from staff.
Nope, just here to answer questions if you have them.
Unless the commission has questions directly of the staff, it's the point in time where I turn it over to us, and we, we discuss in front of the public what we propose to do with this. Commissioner Nemeczek.
It seems to me that, of the calls I got at home, the calls I got from people, comments, the favorable aspects of this far outweighed the negative. Maybe it's the people I know or something, I don't know. Maybe it's people that don't own RVs. It appears to me that there is a, uh, a minority percentage of people that own RVs. And then it appears to me that there is an even smaller percentage of people that own RVs and don't have places to park them, other than the street. And then it appears that there are some people that don't have the budget to rent a place to park the RV. And what I would like to propose is for those people, that we allow people to park these RVs during the summer on city property on the north side of the Department of Public Works Building. That they go to City Hall, they sign a short form saying that they will take all risk, the city does not have any liability, that there is a two-page form that is dated, street number, address, phone number, and that the customer copy is, it's a bright color. The customer copy is hung in a prominent spot on the window of their RV, and they can park it right there. And I drove by there tonight, and there's, there's room for a lot of RVs in there. But now, what I like about it is, there's no houses around there, but yet it's an area that's frequented by city employees a lot, with the power plant and everything else, and it's not far from the campground either. Obviously, people couldn't stay in them. You can't, you can't park it there and then live in it.
Don't say "obviously." Somebody will.
I know. I understand, but to me...
We did, we did kick that around.
To me, we should offer that to people, because...
We talked about that.
We have a lot of, we have a lot of property, and I think that we ought to be able to do that.
Two things came up.
Yeah, well, one of the thing I was gonna add to the first thing you said, I've been contacted a lot over the last couple of weeks, knowing that this public hearing was coming up. And I've been contacted by people who have voiced opposition to it. Mr. Irving, you contacted me by phone. I've gotten other phone calls that have had concerns or questions about parts of the ordinance. I've had other people that contacted me in support of it. parts of the ordinance. I've had other people that contacted me in support of it. In fact, two people contacted me today, but they, they're leery about upsetting their neighbor, long-term neighbor, so they didn't wanna come. You know, that's, I told them I would tell them that I talked to two people, but they didn't wanna leave their names. Um, in regards to parking it on a, on a city property somewhere, we talked about that in 2008. Um, we can certainly check again with our insurance carrier. They were the ones that had an issue with it before in 2008. I think because we were considering at that time a locked gated type facility, if we don't do that, maybe that wouldn't, maybe that would be a, 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 a solution and they.
It says no risk.
And there are areas like that, like where you're mentioning, where not only do public works employees and water department employees go by there a lot, but public safety goes down there through.
Yeah, I, I just thought it was a great spot. It's, and it's in town and most of the problems of parking in the street are right in that area of town where the lots are smaller, I think.
The other problem that we talked about was that we're competing with private storage facilities who do this for a living.
That want, that want rent money and, and should the city compete with them because we'd be doing a.
This wouldn't be covered. There's no cover.
Right. It would be an open.
Mr. Barnhart rented a garage that's covered in his clothes.
Yes.
But it wouldn't be covered. I wouldn't have a problem with that, but I think there ought to be an alternative.
Okay.
And that's something to look at.
Can I go to Commissioner Bostwick?
Yeah, I think I also, that's a good idea. I never thought of that, so. I just had a couple of people who contacted me, one against and one for it. The person that was for it didn't wanna come here today because they were, they didn't wanna upset a neighbor that they thought might come here. So.
That's why I wanted staff to stand up so that the staff, the staff has to take this and staff is not pushing for this one way or the other. The staff has proposed a regulation if we wanna regulate it.
And I do agree that there needs to be something done. I know these lots, some of these people have no places to put it, so it'd be good if there is a place they can put it that would not cost them any more money. So, that's basically all.
Commissioner Gay.
A couple things. Procedural question for the, for Kim. If this was tabled, we would have to select a date to revisit this, correct?
Correct. You would not have to conduct another public hearing unless you wanted to.
Okay. How much time, um, would it take for us to contact our insure, our insurance company to find out if this is a viable option? What Commissioner Nemechek, I mean, is that something we could revisit at the next?
You know, the staff already.
Something we could revisit at the next meeting?
Sometimes our, our, our agent who is located out of Marquette for MMRMA, he needs to, he needs to talk with their underwriters at MMRMA, so it takes a couple of days maybe to get an answer, but.
And, and so I'm clear, we'd have a helpful harmless clause paperwork that would have to be signed in order for it to be, and then we'd add.
Sign once a season, not every time they park there.
Right, right.
At the same time, let's consider the fact that when they park on the street, they're parking on city property.
Correct.
So, I mean.
Um, but as far as the ordinance goes, I, I think it's a good ordinance, um, but I think an alternative for people who have, I have a thirty-foot coachman that I park elsewhere, but that is a great idea. Um, I was kinda wrestling with that. I don't believe, I agree with Director Guyer that city streets are not the place to park private property. Um, people park vehicles, but, uh, my thirty-foot coachman is a ice ore, really, so I, I wouldn't wanna park in front of my house. Um, in order to, in order to give them the authority to do something, there, there has to be an ordinance. We can't, like, uh, one of the gentlemen mentioned, um, who is to determine if a vehicle is in good condition. Well, I can tell you right now, nobody's going to make that determination because it's entirely too open-ended and you, you, you can't, it's, it's based on somebody's perspective. You, you can't make that unless it's specifically written out. Um, the, you can park it. Someone also mentioned that, you know, if someone stopped at a restaurant to eat or something like that and, and had a camper attached, obviously that's a long vehicle. They're gonna have to find a interesting, you know, a, a place to park it. But according to this ordinance, um, they can be parked for forty-eight hours, so they're not gonna be ticketed for stopping at a restaurant. Um, furthermore, when you get down to the, the dwelling, a lot of people, you know, you have family coming to town and it's nice to give them their own place, especially if it has air conditioning for them to stay in. And that provision's put in here where someone can, can stay in for two weeks. Again, how, how is that gonna be enforced? It's not gonna be enforced realistically unless there's a complaint or there's an issue because no one's gonna know how long someone's been staying in your camper. Um, beyond that, I'm in favor of the ordinance, but I would be in favor of, um, investigating that Commissioner Nemechek's suggestion prior to passing.
Commissioner Matten and the guy who was here the first time.
Personally, most ordinances I don't like. But having said that, I realize that we need to do something because we have, we have some issues that are infringing on others in our community. Um, so I believe we need something in place. I do like also Mr., Commissioner Nemechek's idea. I think it would, at then, for the folks that maybe would have, um, a difficult time taking care of their situation, it would sure help with that. Um, and, uh, at that point, I think then I could, uh, maybe live with this ordinance.
I, I think we have to have an alternative. And I know that there are people that just don't have the budget to go out and rent a garage to park it in and pay a monthly fee.
Okay, well, I, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up tonight. Um, this was a good public hearing. We had a lot of public input. I hope you understand the background a little better than you did when you came to the meeting tonight. Uh, this decision's not gonna be made tonight, I don't think. This decision's gonna be made with everybody knowing what's going on. It isn't gonna be made without full, complete knowledge. And so I think, if I could get a motion to the effect of tabling this and directing staff to come back with the opinion of our insurance carrier for our next meeting, I would think at that point in time, we'd be probably prepared to make a decision.
I don't, I'm not gonna be at the next meeting, I don't think. Hugo isn't.
Send your proxy.
Do you have any more comments, Bo, from the other one?
I'll take one more comment from Butch, okay?
First of all, I think that these guys did a lot better job than they did the first time. I don't know if yous all noticed, it's a lot smaller and everything. I'm not taking that away from them. But if you really look at this, there's two different things here. Okay, there's one that Paul has to have to park on the sidewalk or park on the street. The other thing is for parking in the yards, okay? Paul don't wanna have to enforce that if we're parking in yards for eight feet from something or, and that's the biggest thing. Some of us can park in our yards, some can't. But the ones that can park in the yard, when you gotta go eight feet from the sidewalk, eight feet from the property line, you got your house there, you got your garage there, you got a twenty-foot, four-foot camper, lots are not that big, okay? So to me, there's like two different things here. It's not just one. You know what? I don't know if it should be in one ordinance or two because.
Can I respond to that? The only thing I would say about the setbacks from the, from the house itself, that's, that's a definite as far as from a firefighting, you know, firefighting, public safety, I don't really see any way around that. Um, the setbacks on the property line.
Cause you probably have propane onboard your tanker, on your camper, right?
You, you could. Well, even that, but to fight a fire. I mean, there's no way to hook up to a trailer and yank it out of the way when the house is on fire and you're trying to fight it. Or if there's something catastrophic that happens inside the trailer, cause those things go in about a minute and a half. Um, you know, if, you have to be able to get around it and I can.
Well, I'm not saying you can't get around it. I'm just saying you're somewhere, you know, you're closer to the sidewalk. You know what I mean? You're, I'm just thinking we're making too much for Paul and these two.
I, let me, let me put it to you this way. In, in my professional job, I inspect things that are supposed to be certain distances away from certain objects, dwellings, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? If I see something that looks, that's supposed to be at ten feet and it looks generally at ten feet, I'm not gonna pull a tape measure out. Again, that's, you know, that's my opinion. I'm quite certain that's, that's how Paul would interpret it as well. But if you see something that's parked right next to, two feet away, that's gonna create a problem if there's ever a fire in either the RV or the structure. Um, the other consideration with, you know, with, with these things, and it wasn't really mentioned, the other consideration with these, a lot of these parked here, there and everywhere is the, the potential for bad things to happen when kids get in them. Um, I know most people are responsible and they keep them locked, but locked doors typically don't keep out bad people. So, you know, I, it, it's just another consideration. Um, actually, and that would be the only thing that would give me any concern about.
Parking them all in the same spot.
Parking them all in the same spot is, that's a magnet for, that's a magnet for theft, break-ins or other bad things. That would be, you know, my only issue, but I think that would, I think the benefit would outweigh the disadvantage to it.
That's why I chose the spot I did though.
Yeah.
I mean, rather than a remote location up in the industrial park where.
Where no one ever drives by.
Where no one ever goes, yeah. There's people by there all the time.
So, I mean, it, hopefully that answers your question or.
It does. The only other thing, like, if I would, when I moved to Gladstone, if you, you know, the ordinance was there where I couldn't park my trailer there, you know, on the street, there was none. Now after forty years, I gotta find a place to park it where I've been doing it. You know, that, and I'm not going to person, you know, and our lots are not that big. The other thing with the setback from the front, too, is you gotta remember, you gotta go up over a curb unless you knock it all out and repour cement, cause if you go from the front side and, cause you're not gonna go over the curb with your, with your camper. So, that would keep people from going from the front unless there was a driveway there, you know?
Right, and they, and they said that you could park it in your driveway with, correct me if I'm wrong, even if it extended in front of the house, provided the tongue did not, didn't go over the sidewalk.
Six feet or something?
No.
No, if it's on, if it's on a driveway, established driveway, it can go up to two feet from the sidewalk.
It said it's established driveway or it's at a parking spot?
Established parking area.
Okay, so it's a driveway. Otherwise, I can put a sign up, say this is a parking area and I can park there. The way it's written. I'm, I'm saying we're gonna do that, but.
Right, and established driveway, though, has to have curb cuts and things like that.
Right.
Okay.
That's it.
No, it's not.
I'm in.
Yes or no? Do you think Commissioner Nemechek's idea is a workable idea? You're, you're representative of the sample, I would say.
I think it's gonna be workable for some people.
Oh, okay.
No, no, what I'm saying, it's gonna be workable for some people, for a lot of people, especially with the smaller lots that can't get it in there. You know, I, I, I think it's an alternative, you know? The only other thing, what I would say is if that's not working, let's go back with a subcommittee again. We've been doing this for how many years? What's one more, few more months, you know? If we've been in doing it this long, let's try it again and see what we can come up with. I'm gonna definitely be able to get on that, too, so.
Thanks, Butch.
Yep.
All right, like I said, I'd, I'd like to see a motion. I think we're at that point. It seems that's the consensus.
I'd move to table, table this issue to the next regular commission meeting, at which time staff can provide information, uh, from our insurance carrier per Commissioner Nemechek's suggestion.
I'll second. Moved by Commissioner Gay, supported by Commissioner Matten to table this item and ask staff to come back with a recommendation from a library and property carrier regarding Commissioner Nemechek's suggestion. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Again, thank you for coming out tonight. Now we get to talk about budget. Uh, the city commission held, just this for the city commission's benefit and the public as well, we held two budget hearings. We heard, I think what we heard was, um, information that most of us can swallow for all of our funds except the general fund. I think the general fund is the one that we need to pay some attention to tonight. I don't wish to go over the general fund again, cause we went over it in detail with staff, basically for the public. Staff was directed to come up with a general fund budget that tried to restore some of the things that have been lost. St- I'm told that staff started out with a three-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit or three-hundred-plus deficit and whittled it down to a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand. At our meeting, we were told that from that hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar deficit that we would be adding one public safety officer and the cost identified with that was eighty-six thousand. We would be adding another parks and recreation full-time employee. The cost with that would be forty-eight thousand and it would cost twenty-three thousand dollars to take the part-time clerical in the public safety department and create a full-time position for that. If you add those numbers up, there's a hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar deficit. Um, and so tonight, it's up to us at our public hearing on the budget after we take public comment to, to discuss, I think mainly the general fund budget. I would caution the commission, we're not deciding whether we're gonna hire an officer or a parks and recreation employee or promote the clerical to full-time. That's a staff decision, but we are adopting a budget. And obviously, if we don't have to adopt a budget that includes those amounts, then staff would be foolhardy to go ahead without our authority. So indirectly, we are hiring those people and, and that's basically the, the background of the general fund. And if that, um, I guess I'd open up to the public for public comments before, uh, I go to staff to flesh out what I talked about. Seeing no public comments. I go to the city manager.
Um, I put a little bit more detail in your packet tonight, um, based on follow-up questions in, in certain areas. Um, was this included? Was that not included? At what level was this included? So I, I kinda listed a few more, um.
You're in the general fund now?
General fund, yep. Um, question I get all the time, what, what are we budgeting um, for the school and public library? We did include, uh, so the budget that was proposed includes all of this stuff listed here, includes, uh, ten thousand dollars for the school and public library. Um, we added this year, uh, fifteen thousand dollars to bring our commission meetings back to, um, Charter airing them live on the second and fourth Mondays. This came about a couple of years ago. Got a phone call from Charter that said, um, the lines that we had need to be converted to a fiber line. Um, and the cost back then was fifteen thousand dollars to have that done. Uh, that was the year the general fund was thirty thousand in the negative. I said, sorry, we don't have fifteen thousand to do that. What's another solution? Um, Charter comes down, we pay them a hundred-and-fifty dollars a meeting. We tape the meetings and then we give the CD to the city of Esconaba and our meetings are aired on channel twenty-one, uh, Thursday nights after their regular meeting. Um, contacted Don Gladwell again in preparing this budget. Is the number still fifteen thousand? I got a confirmation, yes, it's still fifteen thousand. A little bit more discussion at the staff, staff level with that. Um, with, with technology and, and we're, we're trying to get a lot of information available on our website, not only for residents but for tourists. Um, I'm thinking maybe there could be another solution there. Uh, above this fifteen thousand is the thirty-six hundred for Charter to come and tape them, a hundred-and-fifty dollars a meeting. Um, could we give this same CD to our IT person and, and get that on our, the commission meetings on our website? There's another source for people, if they forget Thursday night, what Thursday nights, you know, Esconaba's meetings are, um, they could go to our website and view it at any time. So, that may be a, a solution, maybe a little cheaper solution. Um, but I thought, um, I was directed to bring this back to the commission for a decision, so. Um, we, we've had in here additional staff for public safety, eighty-six thousand, six-seventy. Um, the dispatcher, um, office clerk at public safety, um, currently works, uh, thirty hours a week. Um, this would bring her up to full-time with benefits. Um, we, we talked a little bit at the budget meetings about the public safety building itself. Uh, the building right now is financed through USDA. Uh, our payoff is four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Originally financed was, was close to a million. I don't remember exactly the amount, but, um, and that was fourteen years ago. We have six more years to go on that amortization schedule. Uh, interest rate is at five percent. We called USDA to refinance that. That is not an option. Uh, whatever we signed up for fourteen years ago, there's no option to refinance that.
They like receiving interest.
Yeah. Um, so, so we, we put in the, the budget that was proposed, we are looking to pay USDA off internally and then, and have a ten-year payback, um, at a lower interest rate for an annual payment of forty-three thousand, one-seventy. Prior to this proposal, our annual payment is anywhere from seventy-two to seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So this would be a little bit of relief, you know, on, on the police and fire budget. Um, we talked about the additional staff in parks and recreation, uh, to the two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars and some equipment purchases for parks and recreation in the amount of fifteen thousand. Um, the rest of the general fund budget is wages, benefits, some training. Um, there are projects budgeted in here, but they're covered by a source of revenue. So if you cancel the project, you'd be canceled. you'd be canceling revenue at the same time. Again, in the past, staff and I have tried our hardest to present a balanced budget for you guys. This year, we, we felt a little different. There were some issues here that, that we need direction on, and your support, if, if you so choose, and that this was the best way, we thought, to present this to, to you and the public, to get some direction on those items. So, like Mayor Mackey said, the general fund is proposed out of balance here. I can just quickly go through the other funds. Major Street Fund, they have a better-than-balanced budget. They're looking at putting almost $20,000 into fund balance, although the, the Major Street Fund looks a whole lot different today than it did not so long ago. They, they had a pretty good deficit in, in both the street funds, but we've climbed our way out of that. And the only project in the Major Street Fund for the current, for the proposed budget here is a chip seal on 13th Street from Michigan Avenue to Lake Shore Drive. And again, we've said how many times, our streets are in need of repair, but the money that we get from the state of Michigan for the gas and weight tax just isn't enough for us to bring them, bring them up at all. We can crack fill and, and fill some potholes and maintain them best we can, but that's about all the money we have. On the local street side, the, the budget proposed is not a balanced budget. We are looking to take $32,000 from fund balance to make the budget balance. There is $32,000 in the fund balance, so there's no, no problem there. But again, local street's pretty similar to Major Street. There isn't a whole lot in fund balance. No projects under local street funds, and, and these two funds is mainly where our Public Works staff works most of the year, for other funds as well, but, but mainly. And we have budgeted one additional staff person in Public Works. We have downsized through attrition for many, many years in all of our departments. As you're seeing here tonight, we are beyond the breaking point, and, and just to maintain the services that we have, we're requesting another staff.
So if that one staff person wasn't hired, they'd probably be looking at less of, of being, running in the red in the local street fund?
Little bit, because it's spread between Major Street, Local Street, Solid Waste. They work for other departments.
Sure.
So. State Trunk Line, that's a fund created. We do some work for the state of Michigan on US 2241 and M35, and get reimbursed for that. At one time, this budget was close to $20,000, so as you can see, it's mow the grass on the highway once a year. That's all they'll reimburse us for. It's been cut way, way back. On the next page, we have the Dr. Mary Creighton's Fund. Honestly, in my opinion, this, this fund has really saved a lot of departments, not only parks and recreation, but some work up at our cemetery. This money is very specifically earmarked for certain departments. It's not just a blank check that can be spent anywhere. So you, as you can see here, this is where we're proposing, using $227,000 of the Dr. Mary Creighton's money. That would leave us $89,000 in the Dr. Creighton's Fund, if all these projects are able to be accomplished in the year. Again, really hinging on that staff person in the general fund for parks and recreation. Building Authority Fund is, is created specifically to make the bond payment. If that bond payment went away, you would, we would not need the Building Authority Fund anymore. The Economic Development Fund, EDC, this is not a revenue generating fund. The funds in here are, it was originally a CDBG grant many, many years ago, before I was even with the city, and these are some funds left over, just looking to do some improvements. Schoquist and Clark were paved many years ago. They've never even been crack-filled. We try to hit, you know, big potholes as we can, but at Berry's request, if we could do some crack-filling up there, and contribution to the EDA, that's about all that budget would support. The next page, we have the Capital Projects Fund. The only project we have this year coming through this fund is our GIS, $17,000. We've come a long way on our GIS system. Staff and I use GIS daily. We can bring up a map and turn layers on, and it's, it's very beneficial for internal use. Prior to that, we would get out old maps, make photocopies, and get out our highlighters, and that's how we've made maps, so definitely come a long way with technology for GIS. DDA capture, again, this money is a capture of various entities' tax revenue, including the cities, and can only be spent in the designated DDA district. So, so the whole city is not a DDA. Certain areas of the city are designated DDA. Major projects for this pla, for the DDA this year, finishing our central gathering place parking lot on Delta Avenue there. It will no longer be a parking lot, but a central gathering place. We received a $50,000 MEDC grant to help us do that, matching that with some DDA funds. Really looking forward to seeing that completed. It was looking really nice in the fall before Mother Nature gave us a blanket of white on that. And the, the second major thing for DDA would be to remodel the building that was purchased on Delta Avenue. The DDA purchased the former Front Row Video Building, looking at remodeling that and opening it up under the DDA's direction, and, and having a lot more events in that area downtown. DDA can also support some street projects if they're in the DDA district, like I mentioned. The two downtown concierge that we hire, special event staff, continuing the farmer's market downtown, continuing our facade program, again, new events and some beautification. And that would be the DDA budget for this year. Our Harbor Fund, we separate the harbor out of the general fund when we received the waterways money for the docks. So the harbor is in its own fund this year, and, and able to put $4,000 into a fund balance to help support future expansion of the harbor. Solid Waste Fund, this has been moved to a enterprise fund. It was a special revenue fund in the past. When we collected a portion of the tax revenue to support this fund, we no longer do that. We eliminated the 1.68 mils, and it's completely, the revenue comes on the utility bill. So for full service, $16 a month. So it, it's now an enterprise fund instead of a special revenue fund. Supporting itself there, definitely $21,000 going into fund balance.
You eliminated 1.68 mils?
Yep.
When did we do that?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, yep.
That got us back to?
13.6 mils.
Did we have, what's the most millage we ever had?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yep.
What is, Eskenaba has seventeen?
Seventeen, yep.
Other cities around us have more?
Yes.
Some have as much as 20 that I'm aware of.
Kingsford has 22, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Zedak, I believe it was 22.
Next is our Electric Fund. We are looking at no rate adjustment this year in the Electric Fund, and able to put, the budget we're projecting will be putting $107,000 into fund balance. However, there, there might be some more projects that we might be able to look at. We, we're gonna have, our elected department supervisor is retiring, so that's staff change. Plus, we have a lineman retiring. So if, if we decide to hire another lineman, part of this is gonna have to go towards training. They, they spend many hours under a training program to be a, a full lineman, so preliminary budget as presented. Wastewater Fund, we are looking at taking $41,000, just over $41,000 from fund balance to make the fund balance. We're looking at a 25 cent per thousand gallon rate increase, and, and as you can see here, that, that's not enough just to cover our annual expenses. Looking at a couple projects here, some, some money to be spent on a plant upgrade, lift station upgrade, gonna do some filming on the east part of Delta Avenue. They support the GIS project, and a digester cover repair. On the Water Fund, we are looking at a 25 cent per thousand gallon rate increase as well on the Water Fund, and that too is not enough to cover the expenses. We would be taking $25,000, just over $25,000 from fund balance to make the fund balance. Projects in the Water Fund, we are looking at upgrading our shorewell, continuing our second transmission main, Second Avenue North project, another second transmission main from the plant. Water Fund supports the GIS project, new windows and intake inspection for the Water Department. Equipment Fund, this is not a balanced budget in the Equipment Fund. We are $58,000 out of balance, and there is not $58,000 in fund balance to cover that. So we've had some, a couple meetings since our budget workshops in February, looking to dissolve the Equipment Fund. We are working with our auditors on that. That would be done at the end of the fiscal year, and then moving the assets to the appropriate fund where they belong, where they get used out of. Then any activity left would be transferred to the general fund. So we'll have to come back to you in April with what that would look like, the effect on the general fund for that. And the Perpetual Care Fund, required fund to have because of Fernwood Cemetery, to, to keep, you know, maintenance of the cemetery well into the future. So total revenues, 11 million total expenses, more expenses and revenue as, as the budgets show there. So I just wanted to go over a little bit more detail tonight.
All right, I'm gonna go to each individual, well, I'm gonna go by, on a fund-by-fund basis. I think that's the fastest way to knock this down. Does anybody have any questions on the Major Street Fund? Local Street?
I don't think we're gonna have any questions on any fund.
Not even the general fund?
Well, the general fund, we have to make up the difference, but.
All right, all right, and I'm gonna assume that the general fund is the one that needs our attention tonight, so I'm gonna go to Commissioner Nemechek and ask you to tell us what you think about the general fund.
I grew up in the west end of the UP. That's from Michigan. 10,000 people when I lived there. We had a thriving community. We had fire. We had police protection. We had all of that. And then the population went down. And then we no longer became a full-service city. Westmore is no longer a full-service city. Doesn't have its own police department. Doesn't have its own fire department. Relies on the county sheriff if there's a problem. Happens to be the county seat, so that's a help. I knew on this commission, but I have a background in, in economics. I went to business school. I mean, I've always, I've run small businesses that are a lot bigger money-wise than the city of Gladstone. And I'm impressed with how Gladstone has been able to pinch pennies and get things done, but you know, the newest pickup truck that the city owns is 14 years old. You know that the newest dump truck that plows our street is 17 years old. We need to become a first-class city, and we can't do it, in my opinion, I'll go along with it this year, but next year, we're gonna have to have a millage increase, and we're gonna have to be like the rest of the world, and we're gonna have to ask people to support Gladstone. I think most people have a pretty positive view of how the city's been run. I go to coffee with a bunch of old farts at McDonald's, and I don't hear them griping. And if they're not griping, who's gonna gripe? I mean, I know we got this ordinance on RVs. I'm just saying, on a day-to-day basis, public safety, you got 24/7, so if you're gonna talk about seven days and three shifts and two people on, that's 42 shifts that have to get covered over a week's time. Right now, we got eight people.
Yep.
Including you.
Nine.
But eight people that obviously do five shifts a week. Eight times five is only 40. Isn't hard to figure out, and that doesn't count people getting sick, or people on vacation, or all that. I just think we have to rethink the process here in Gladstone and become a first-class city. And I think that, that should be our major project for next year. I have no problem at all taking $150,000 out of the Electric Fund, which has $2.2 million in it. The Electric Fund Manager said that 1.5 million is more than enough for catastrophe. He's very comfortable with 1.5 million. We're at 2.2 million. I have no problem taking $150 million out of there. That money got there by electric rates.
$157,000, you said million, Dave.
$157,000, sorry.
Too many zeros there.
That money got there because we started buying power from a cooperative, and we got ready to serve flat rates on the bills. That's how it got there. And what bugs me is that if I was a citizen in Gladstone, I don't have a say on that, but I have a say about renewing millage, or even new millage. But I don't have a say about flat rates, utility rates, water rates. I don't have a say about that. The city commission does that. You're welcome to come and comment, but you vote on millage. And I don't see why Gladstone, Gladstone, people say Gladstone's taxes are high. It's high because of the school. It's not because of the city. The city has to collect the taxes. Gladstone schools have a lot of millage, you know, built buildings and maintaining, and they have all kinds of millage. That's why it's higher, it's 53 mils. Anyway, I have no problem taking the money out of the Electric Fund, and I wanna make our goal to be first-class city next year with a millage increase.
Thank you, Commissioner Nemechek. Commissioner Bostwick?
Well, I won't have a problem this year with that $157,000. I'm not sure about the millage, but we definitely need to figure out a way of making sure that doesn't happen every year like this, otherwise we're not gonna have the money to support it. So I guess that's my opinion on it.
Commissioner Geisport?
Well, I've looked at, I've looked at each of these items, and I've, I've come to, I've come to a proposal, I guess you would say. We'll take them item by item, and the general fund, the points that are included here. The school and public library, currently, we've got $10,000 budgeted for the school and public library. Took a look at the other entities that pay, that, that, you know, pay the, the public library. Both Brampton and Eskenaba Township are paying at $1.22 per capita, roughly. So I calculate, calculated that out, it came to $6,100. So I would propose putting us at the same level as the other customers of the public library. The live, the live commission meeting item for $15,000, I think it would be very simple to, as the city manager indicated, to, especially with YouTube, to, take that, take that video, upload it to YouTube. You could, you could have a link there on the website to where someone would just go to the website, click on it, and it goes right to the whole, the entire meeting. I would propose holding off on going to the live meetings, or the, the live commission meetings for $15,000. Go down to the additional staff for public safety. I've had multiple conversations, meetings with the director, Paul Guyer, city sergeant, Scott Larson, and I have been advocating for an additional officer for two years. Through conversations with both, I've, at least for this year, I've changed my, I've changed my opinion. I do, however, based on, based on their assertions, I do believe that we need to provide them a little bit more latitude with overtime. The city commission, a few years back, restricted their overtime to a certain point where it, it can really get tight in there if, in certain situations. So I would propose, rather than adding an additional public safety officer for $86,670, I would propose we drop that number to $35,000 and simply. I would propose we drop that number to $35,000 and simply allow Director Guyer a little bit more latitude on overtime to ensure that the shifts are covered. Initially, I was against the next item, public safety dispatch clerk to full-time status. Initially, I was against that completely. I believe I told Director Guyer that my priority would be an additional officer before taking that employee to full-time. Again, through multiple conversations and actually talking about day-to-day processes and some of the things that he's required to do and what she's capable of doing. He should have been a salesman because he's, he's got me, he's got me to agree with him on that point as well. So I would also propose a 23660 to take the public safety dispatch clerk to full-time status. Public safety bond payment. Currently, it's 72,000. Proposed in the budget, they have, as the city manager indicated, they're talking about a basically a payoff internal finance. I have a little bit different take on that. What I would propose would drop that number to zero. I would propose that the electric fund, basically this is an asset transfer. That building is purchased by the electric fund. It's then owned by the electric fund. That asset, essentially, it should be, based on the value of the building, it may actually increase the total assets of the electric fund. It would decrease the cash, but it would either maintain or increase the total fund balance. So that would be an asset transfer to the electric fund and that number would go to zero because there would no longer be a bond payment, especially in light of the discussions and the, you know, talk of, and forming a committee to look at purchasing a new fire truck. We're going to need to free up some funding in the future to pay for that. Additional staff for parks and recreation, I would include that as part of the, part of, what I would propose, the reason for that is we have, we have such a large parks department and with the realization that we can't cover it with the current staff based on the breakdown of hours, I think that is a necessity. That would be in the amount of $48,000. When we get down to equipment purchase for parks and recreation, I would, I would say that we could hold off on that item. We've talked previously about trying to figure out how to, we have, we have city residents who pay 100% of the recre, of the cost of recreational facilities, yet we have non-city residents who have the ability to utilize these facilities without any cost to them. And there are a few ideas and I think that we need to pursue, looking for ways to recoup some of that, some of those dollars from residents of other municipalities to assist. And I think that's something that we need to move further towards, but at this time, I would suggest that we hold off on the equipment purchase for parks and rec. Now, based on all my calculations, I know I've talked a lot, if you take the 157,516 and you change the expenditures to what I've indicated, the funding levels I've indicated, I have, you know, based on my proposal, the general fund would only be out of balance, Based on the electric fund adding 107,098, I would, I would propose that we transfer that 28, 28,776 from the electric fund to the general fund. That would reduce the increase in the electric fund to 78,322. That's all I've got.
Commissioner Matten.
Wow. My proposal would be to reduce the deficit spending by 100,000. Some of the issues that we have aren't just today or next year or five years from now. Some of the things that we have long-term with some of our long-term liabilities, retirement and healthcare costs, we're going to need to, to address these at some point. And so I guess I'm not in favor of, of having, putting some things in place that are going to be, that we can't really sustain and we're going to have to look at next year and then cut back on. Until we get some things in place that the state has taken away from us, including our, our share of our revenue sharing, I think that was a good article that Mayor Mackey had, had put on our sites there. It talks about what the state has really done to the local municipalities and how they've basically taken the local taxpayers' money to fund their problems, their issues. And so we need to work with our state representatives and not beat up on them all the time, but we need to talk to them, build some relationships so we can get some of this money back because this is where it needs to be spent, needs to be spent, local communities, less big government, more, and more to the local governments. And, and so I think we need to keep it closer to the vest here. I don't think we can continue to, to, to think that maybe next year's going to be better necessarily. I think we have to live as close to the budget as we can. So I'm proposing that we would reduce that deficit spending by about 102,000.
That's all here.
Commissioner Gay and I spent all Friday in meetings. From four in the morning till noon in Gladstone, most of the time, we have an officer working alone, a public safety officer. That's not a good idea. That was never the case when I worked here. Sat down with the sergeant and the director, who used to be a sergeant when I worked here, and we had a long conversation. The public safety department, all of a sudden, it's feeling like everybody wants to help them out, but they're skeptical about how much help we can provide long-term and I don't blame them for thinking that. I just did some quick calculating and it's kind of late, but I think I got it right. And in terms of millage, this is mainly for Commissioner Nemec, it's for all of us, of course, but mainly for Commissioner Nemec. One mill should take us back to a point where we'd be operating in the black. For Commissioner...
How many dollars is one mill generating?
I had it on here. I figured one. What I did is I backed out of the deficit by levying enough millage to back out of the deficit in general fund. That's what I got to, instead of three. Three mills would be to get you to that 17 number. Three mills, you'd, you'd be looking to spend money again. That's not necessarily a good situation either.
You know, that's what I'd want. You know, when I was in business, you can plan a recession. And a lot of people plan a recession and then they have a recession. I don't think that Gladstone, I, I think Gladstone deserves better. I think we need to give the public a chance to support the city. Well, I think we need to give the public a chance to vote as to whether or not they want to have a first-class city or if they want to have a city that's talking about knocking down what we pay the library by $4,000 and knocking about. I think that that's not what we need. Obviously, I'm new to all this, but to me, and the people that work in the city have, have a bad opinion of the city. The people that live in the city, the people that I talk to, have a good opinion of the city.
Okay.
I think there's misconceptions and I think, like that guy from Nashville told the Methodist here in town when they were building a church, you have to give people the opportunities to give.
Okay. When we met with the public safety department, I was giving this, the director said, and I think this is good advice, if we are going to look, and we haven't made that decision in, we're not going to make that decision then, but if we are going to go look at for additional millage, we better sell that baby and sell that baby harder or it won't go through.
Well, that's...
Otherwise...
I remember how many times we had to go through to get to new high school.
True. So...
On that, on that point though, sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
On that point, you were sitting in the meeting, you know, when, when you and I met with, with department heads. And, and I would say the same thing to that, you know, to you as we, as I said then, if you're going to ask for something like that, you do it once. And be prepared for the answer. That's the only, that's the only advice.
I agree.
The situation where you continually go back to voters until...
The school will always bug me and that should never be allowed.
Until, until someone forgets that there's an election going on and...
Take the vote and vote and vote and vote until it finally gets passed.
Exactly. That I don't agree with.
My wife was on the school board when they were doing that and I told them that was totally wrong.
But that would be my advice. If you're going to do that, be prepared for the answer and ask once.
Yep.
Anyways, back to what I, what I was saying, one mill would, would put us in a good situation. Three mills would put us in a situation where we would probably be spending money in government and doesn't necessarily...
We might even replace some of those plow trucks and some of those...
I'll get to that. I'll get, I'll get to that. We haven't talked at all tonight, and to be honest, we haven't talked at all tonight because we don't have the wherewithal to replace capital items. Well, we all know what happens when you don't replace capital items, they fall apart and all of a sudden you, you have the piper to pay. And so we need to get back to that point. And as far as also that one mill coupled with some of that money back that the state took away from us, yes, they took it away from us. I can prove that, it's not hard to prove. The last I heard, it was $200,000 from our city manager that we're down in revenue sharing. Well, if you put $200,000 into our general fund budget this year, we'd be operating on, with a surplus. We wouldn't be operating with a deficit. So you put together a little bit of additional millage and some state shared revenues, which I'm not saying they're going to happen, so I'm not saying a budget for that, and we'd be talking about an entirely different situation. So if we're talking gloom and doom here, if that's what it sounds like, we're talking the truth. And so we have a big decision with the general fund budget. The only thing about the general fund that does make me leery about a millage is we're already picking up services for a greater population than the city of Gladstone through our public safety and through our parks and recreation. And that's not really fair to city residents, to be paying the full share. And that philosophically, I'm opposed to, but I also am very much opposed to officers working alone for too much time. I just never experienced that when I worked here and that's, that's not a good long-term recipe. That's a recipe for somebody getting hurt. And I don't want to be in charge when that happens. The other funds, they're, they're, they're in a holding position. They're not reinvesting, but they're not, they're not losing money either, but they're not reinvesting. Our streets are deteriorating faster than we can fix them. The equipment we use is old, as you pointed out. So whatever we do on the budget this year, it's not a long-term capital plan. It's a, it's a get-through-the-year plan. We're not in that bad a shape, but we do need to address some long-term costs. And so we've done an awful lot of thinking. Commissioner Gay and I have been to a lot of meetings lately. I would like to see a motion. I don't know that I heard one from all the four voices that were coming down the line here, so I don't know if anybody's...
After hearing Matt's, I actually do like Matt's.
Apparently you got support for your motion.
Would you like me to voice that in the form of a motion?
Please.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
I move that we approve the budget as presented with the following modifications. School and library, school and public library funding level at 6,100. Live commission meeting, delete. Additional staff for public safety, reduce to 35,000. Public safety dispatch clerk to full-time status at 23660. The asset transfer of the public safety building to the electric fund, which would put that funding level, the bond payment funding level at zero. The additional staff for parks and recreation at 48,000. The equipment purchase for parks and recreation, delete. And a transfer that would put us to a negative of 28,776 to be transferred from the electric fund.
City clerk and the city manager get all of that? Do I hear support?
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gay to adopt a budget. I'm not going to repeat what you just said. It's being supported by Commissioner Bostwick. Any further discussion? I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So do we want to do a voice vote?
Yes, we have to.
Can we do a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Nemec?
Oh.
Commissioner Bostwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Matten?
No.
Mayor Mackey?
I would say this at this point in time, this is early on in the year and things change. The budget should never be adopted and not, not reviewed. We are going to be reviewing the budget throughout the year. This is the best guess right now of staff. I'm sure Darla would tell you that things are going to change. Looks like it's going to go through this way, gives staff direction as to where we want to go. I wish it was a unanimous vote, but it isn't. Here's what it is. We have a budget for this year.
I was, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm mainly against the cutback of the library and the cutback of the person for the public safety officer.
Thank you.
I don't see any reason why we have to cut back when we have ample funds to take care of it and that electric one. That's just my opinion.
Well, I would guess...
It's like having a big wallet full of money and that wallet gets bigger every year because the electric fund gets bigger every year. And we're not using it correctly, in my opinion, but that's my opinion, obviously.
I could respond to the...
I was going to, I was going to respond for you, but I know what you're going to say.
I can respond for the library portion. Actually, I'll respond for both. The library portion, the reason I came to that number was because I looked at what other communities that get the same service. So, and it's the same reason why I was in support of the change, you know, we, you had mentioned that we reduced the millage for solid waste. Well, in my opinion, if a guy has a $300,000 house and he pays for solid waste removal based on the value of his house, he's paying more for the exact same service of a person that owns a $50,000 house. It's not fair.
It's not fair.
And that's why, that's how I looked at that. You know, I calculated out 1.2, $1.22 per capita that the, that the local townships, the other townships that utilize the exact same service, why should city residents pay more than that? And that's how I came to that 6,100 number.
I'm talking about millage. I don't think that a citizen of Gladstone should have to pay all, all the flat charges on the bill in, in no reference to their economic ability to pay or anything else. I think that's wrong. I think a millage is what's the fairest way for the citizens to be taxed. If a person has a $300,000 house, he's going to pay a lot more taxes than a person that has a $25,000 house. But if we have all these increasing rates and heavy to, ready-to-serv charges, that, that person down at, with the $25,000 house is having to decide between pills and food. And I think it's wrong.
But how can you, how can you justify, and I don't want to rehash this whole thing, but how, how can you justify a person paying $100 a month for the exact same service that another person's paying $10 a month for? I, I can't, I can't justify that.
Why would you have that?
Well, if you had, if you had someone with a $300,000...
Because of the millage?
Well, what previously, the way that we charged for the solid waste was that 1.6 in mills.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So we allevi, we eliminated that and we went to a user fee. So everybody pays the exact same thing for the exact same service. I can't justify someone with a $300,000 house paying more money for the exact same service that somebody else with a $30,000 house pays $10 a month for.
It's the same reason we have progressive taxes.
But it's a service.
Can we have a, can we agree to put this on a future agenda?
Yes.
Good. I think Bill's getting upset that he didn't come up earlier in the agenda. This is good conversation and you know, a five to nothing vote says one thing, a three to two vote says something else. It says there's healthy, healthy, healthy conversation.
I have no problem with a three to two.
Moving on to unfinished business, we don't have any unfinished business tonight, so we'll move to new business. Girl Scout cystic fibrosis foundation walk is in front of us tonight.
Is Autumn tall with us tonight? Autumn and a few other Girl Scouts.
Uh-oh. There you are.
Oh, Autumn's not here, sorry. Her name was on the application, so...
Could you tell us who your girls are? Please. Could you tell us who your girls are, please?
I'm Morgan.
I'm Hannah.
I'm Holly.
We're from shoot five to six zero. We wanted to start a cystic fibrosis walk 'cause I have cystic fibrosis and we wanted to raise some money so then they would be able to, like, be able to make new medications and stuff to be able to cure it, so.
Okay. Cystic fibrosis is an inherited chronic disease that affects the lungs and...
That's a big word, right?
Yes. Digestive system of about 30,000 children and adults in the United States, 70,000 worldwide. A defective gene and its protein product cause the body to produce unusually thick sticky mucus that clogs the lungs and leads to life-threatening lung infections and obstructs the pancreas and stops natural enzyme...
Enzymes.
Enzymes from helping the body break down and absorb food. In 1950, few children with cystic fibrosis lived to attend elementary school. Today, advices and research and medical treatments have further advanced to extend life for children and adults with CF. Many people with the disease can now expect to live into their 30s, 40s, and beyond. Since 1955, the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation has been the driving force behind the pursuit of a cure. Thanks to the dedication and financial backing of our supports, patients, families, and friends, clinicians, researchers, volunteers, individual donors, corporations, and staff, we are making a difference.
Thank you.
Can we clap?
I assume these are some proud mothers out here. You girls, probably the first thing you should do is you should hit up the wealthy city commissioners for a donation to your cause. So, we're looking for action.
They're looking to hold the walk May 31st, 2014, from 9:00 to 2:00. And the route was included in your packet. Staff reviewed it and we have no problems with the route or the day or...
With approval.
assisting where needed.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Numicek, supported by Commissioner Gay, to approve the cystic fibrosis walk from the Girl Scouts. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion's carried. Gladstone Yacht Club's Hannibal Grant Request. Mr. Earhart.
I'm like Paul in this one.
Exactly.
Once again, my name is Bill Earhart, Tracer, Gladstone Yacht Club. Many of you may understand that for the last six years, we've been hosting a music festival where we always benefit some worthy group. Last year, it happened to have been the Boy Scouts and so on. What we're asking you folks is, our budget for this year is gonna, is being proposed to increase greatly. And apparently, we have an opportunity to receive some funds from Hannibal. But, we would need your approval to utilize your 501(c)(3) status in order to secure those funds from Hannibal, apparently through you and then on to us.
I can answer any questions, but I don't know how this is done here.
The director, Nicole Sanderson, Parks and Recreation Director, met with your board or yourself and discussed the details. They need a local governmental board to run the application through.
I believe we've done this before.
Yes. Oh, yes.
We've become basically a pass-through agency.
Yes.
Yeah, that was my understanding. I mean, I don't know how it works.
So, the full application needs to come before me. You need my signature on it.
Okay.
And then, I believe 10 copies need to be delivered to Hannibal prior to March 31st, the deadline.
Okay.
So, we need action from the commission.
I move that we approve the grant application.
I support it.
Does that preclude other 2% money?
No. No.
You don't think it'll have any effect on other applications that we've made?
No.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Matten, supported by Commissioner Bostwick, to approve the Gladstone Yacht Club Hannibal Grant Request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's carried.
Did you have a Dollar Mountain mine, Bill? I know that wasn't the one you reported.
Yeah, we're looking somewhere around 5,000.
Oh, good.
Thank you, neighbor. City of Gladstone, now we're, we've got a couple of grant requests.
Mm-hmm.
Same source, right?
One of them. Yep.
I thought they both were. Okay. So, the first one would be the City of Gladstone Parks and Recreation DNR Passport Grant Application.
Correct. This application is due April 1st. Nicole, our director, is on vacation and Jason is home sick tonight, so I'm gonna cover this for you. So, the DNR Passport Grant, we are looking to, that's an annual grant that the city can apply for, and we're using our sports park master plan that we had last year to improve some of our ball fields. The passport grant, the maximum you can apply for is $45,000. So, that's what we're requesting, to be paired with another grant, which is the next agenda item, for accommodation for some work on the ball fields.
Questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Gay, supported by Commissioner Matten, to approve the Parks and Recreation Department DNR Passport Grant Application. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's carried. We're also applying for, through the Parks and Recreation Department, a Hannibal Grant Request. That is 2% money.
This is 2% money. We are going to apply for 50,000 from Hannibal for the 2% money to be paired with the DNR Passport Grant. Again, if we are declined on either one of them, then we either need to scale back on the project or apply again next year. So, looking to put these two grant applications together to do some work on the ball fields up at the sports park.
Also move.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Numicek, supported by Commissioner Bostwick, to approve the Parks and Recreation Department Hannibal 2% Grant Application for the ball fields. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's carried. Now, finally, we have Proposed Ordinance Number 594 Site Plan Review. Ms. Barron. Good evening.
This change to the site plan ordinance was, a public hearing was held with the planning commission meeting, or at the planning commission level at a previous date. I just gave my outline to Steve, so I don't have that in front of me. But, there was no public comment issued at that time. This change in the site plan review process was kind of instigated by comments from Steve Yu, wanting us to kind of streamline our process for businesses coming into our community. And we wholeheartedly agreed and took a look at our ordinance and made some changes. On the very back, very end of the ordinance proposed that you have, the section in red, if you printed it out with color, Section 8, A, B, and C, is what has been added to the current site plan review process. And basically, what it does is it allows businesses that are coming into an existing, an existing business that has already been established, let's say as commercial, another commercial building, or another commercial business can come into that existing business with minimal application to the city. Prior, what they would have to do is apply to me and then attend a planning commission meeting, provide a full site plan review. We charge them $300. And, you know, that process would take about a month, a month and a half, depending on when they first made contact with me. The new process, if somebody is coming into an existing building and not making any changes to the footprint of the property, and it's an allowable business within that zoning district, we can do administrative approval, which will require department heads to take a look at the plan, make sure there's nothing that stands out to us as detrimental to the surrounding community. There would be a $50 fee for that, so it substantially reduces the dollar amount due to the customer. And the timeframe turnaround is at most a week. So, we can help businesses get in quicker and cheaper into the existing buildings. If there are no changes to the footprint, anytime there's a change to the footprint in the industrial district or the commercial district, it requires a full site plan review by the planning commission. So, just kind of streamline something that we have. A perfect example of this, and I know she left, but when the dewdrop people came into the dewdrop, why do we need to have a site plan review? That's an existing business. Another restaurant coming in, so it will help streamline some of those activities that we have going on. Streamlines it for staff also. Less work.
Makes sense. Questions?
Every once in a while, we come up with an ordinance change that actually makes sense.
I move we approve the zoning court amendment for Section 30-509 as presented.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Matten, supported by Commissioner Gay, to approve Ordinance Number 594 Site Plan Review. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's carried. We are up to the city managers' reports.
In your packet tonight, there was an informational memo from Public Works Supervisor Barry Lund. This information was asked for at our, one of our budget workshops, the current list of our public works equipment and the year of the vehicles and all that stuff. Matt, I think you asked for this?
Yeah. I believe so. Yep.
I went over it and I don't see the street sweeper on the list. I think you forgot.
Street sweeper?
The Vector?
No, that's the, that's the clean sewer.
Oh. Matt, and I thought, Hugo, you and I have talked about our equipment in the past. Would the two of you like to meet with Barry and I? And he's requesting a committee be formed and look at our equipment, kind of get a plan on where do we go from here?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I have, oh, that's the... February 27th, Eric Buckman and I attended a meeting in Merz, in Marquette. From Merz, the new CEO there, has a year under his belt now, and he kind of gave us a 2013 recap of, he's visited many communities and people that, Merz is the city's retirement system, and talked about funding levels. Very good information. They are, they understand the financial conditions of many cities and are willing to work with us on the amortization schedules. And they gave us this pretty good graph. I don't think I shared it with you guys yet, but, so of all their communities, they kind of gave a graph of where people are at on the funding, where they're funded with their retirement system. And we're way down here to the left. We're about 51% funded. The majority of the members are in the middle here, between 70 and 79% funded. And there are 108 communities that are over 100% funded in the retirement system. And something staff and I look at and talk about all the time is our Merz funding and how do we increase that and get to a more comfortable level.
I just ran across something and I can't remember where it is because it's getting late, but the gist of it was that Governor Snyder recently said the federal government should keep their nose out of state government business. And so, the party at the local end said the state should keep their nose out of local business.
Support.
Because the state is getting real concerned about that number. And there is some talk that Governor Snyder may come out with some kind of assistance, but who knows?
Eric had mentioned earlier, we have an invitation from Bob Birbaum. He's the Delta County Emergency Manager. This Friday, the 14th, at 10 o'clock at the courthouse, Eric and I will be attending, along with representatives from the county and City of Escanaba. He offered the invitation to mayor and council people as well.
If the mayor can't make it, the mayor's got board review that day. Can one of you guys?
Which day is it?
Friday, the 14th, at 10:00 a.m.
That's your off day.
That is before I'm leaving. I actually can make that.
Okay. If you'd like to come with us. It's just some preliminary discussion on if Delta County as a whole were to file for a state of emergency, all the steps that we would have to go through before that could occur.
One of the key things I just saw in the paper that he pointed out to the county board is you have had to have exhausted all available funds.
Correct. Yep.
That's easy.
I got an email from Merma, our insurance carrier. They, again, this year, thank God the market is doing well, have a net asset distribution to share with all their members. I don't know how much our amount is yet, but money back in our pocket for insurance is always a good thing. So, the more I learn the dollar amount, I'll be sure and share it with you guys. So, that could change our budget a little bit. A little bit. I also got another email from Communities of Distinction. Our production will begin airing in the month of March in Detroit, WADL TV. I don't think we get that locally, even on Charter or anything. But, they did tell us as, this will be aired 34 times nationally, and they'll let me know where and when. And so, I'll be sure and pass that on to you guys when that happens.
You'll be on TV.
Yeah, right. I'm on WADL. Where's that? That's good. Hopefully, we'll get up here.
Just wanted to share with the full commission, a few commissioners know, I've been working with three retirees on a retirement issue. These are three union employees, and when they retired, we promised them an insurance package for up to six years or up to 10 years at the time after retirement, that we would provide some health insurance for them. The Teamsters insurance that we have, they were being billed to the city on an active plan. They're no longer active. They're retirees. So, I am working with them to find comparable coverage to the best of our ability and live up to our union agreement with them. So, I've been working with Kevin Keveney. He's the local business agent and the retirees on this issue for quite some time. Minor minor snag came up on Friday, but we're working through that. Hopefully, to have that all resolved by the end of the month. So, I understand it's very stressful for retirees. They were promised something and now, you know, maybe the game has been changed or something. Nothing that we did. It's, we're doing what we have to do. So, let's see, a couple more things. Couple businesses, like Renee mentioned, this process. Hopefully, we'll be announcing a few more of these. Happy Rock Cafe, y'all, hopefully have seen that, has opened now downtown at the former DuTu location. Went there last Wednesday. It was very good. Plan to go back many more times. Another business that I've already applied and been approved on Delta Avenue called The Blessed Nest. This is in the former coffee shop. What's it called? Bruin Bronz.
The Blessed Nest?
Blessed Nest. Yep.
That's the Mama Mason?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep. They have signs in the window, plan to do a retail gift shop with some home decor, open weekdays 10 to 6, Saturday 10 to 5. And the owner plans to run it. So, be looking for that opening in the spring. And then, Mama Mason has a sign in the corner, former Corner Bakery.
They're gonna tell me soup and sandwiches and pasties.
Yep. So, I...
You know there won't be any doughnuts.
So, they're working on that. So, that's...
And if Dave has a pasty left to have butter on it, right, Dave?
Yeah, exactly.
So, good news there with some new businesses. I too, like Joe, read several articles wherever I can get my hands on information, you know, anything to do with the state and the budget. Went to MSU's website and a couple good articles that I read there. "Balancing One Year's Government Budget Is Just the Start of a Long-Term Fiscal Sustainability." "Michigan City Government Revenues and Spending Since the Great Recession." A bit of history there. "Including Master Plans in the Budget Process." "Including Master Plans in the Budget Process." We've talked about our master plan recently and the need to update it. And then, rethinking local budget processes. So always looking for some more information on how to do things different, better, more We are negotiating with the Teamsters Union right now. Negotiations are ongoing. Our next session is next Friday, the 21st. Upcoming meetings, we have DDA tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock, EDC tomorrow at noon, and then we have Board of Review going on here at the city Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. The times are posted on your notices. And then, this Thursday, our new MEW Safety Coordinator is on board now. He stopped by last Thursday to kind of get the feel of what was left in the office for him there, and I'll be giving him a tour of the city and showing him the different departments on Thursday morning. So glad to have him on board and get back to some policies that we were working on when the previous coordinator left. That's all I have.
City Commission Committee Reports and Board and Commission Reports. I told you guys at the last meeting I couldn't go to Parks and Recreation. I think Commissioner Boswick said you were going to go to that meeting?
Well, what was that?
Parks and Rec?
When's that?
Since our last meeting, there was a Parks, did you go?
Yes, I did go.
Do you have anything to report, or?
No, I just listened and.
I think it's important.
I thought it was a good one, yep.
Okay. I think that's everything for those items. Move back to public comment. Commissioner, or Director Guyer, it's getting late.
Yeah, I know, it's getting late, but one thing that I thought of when Eric mentioned during his public comment with the water freeze-up is this question we get constantly this time of year is, when are parking restrictions going to be lifted? I can pretty confidently say it'll probably be April 1st this year. I don't see us lifting them early unless we have a severe change in the weather, you know, so it's something that, when they view this on Thursday, maybe cut down on some of the calls or you get questions as commissioners, unless we get a drastic change, Barry and I confer, and they're not going to be lifted early this year, I don't suspect, so.
Thank you. Mr. Yu.
Two little comments. Great job tonight, and also for the zoning administrator. I think it's a plus for any business coming into Gladstone to have that fee reduced for the same use of a building. I thought it was very counterproductive. The other comment, you had the Girl Scouts here tonight. I think it would behoove us if we could, on a small group like that, if they could be up in the beginning of the meeting. I know it's new business, but, you know, they sat here patiently for two hours waiting to give their presentation, and I think it would just be nice to allow them to move up the ladder so they can go home and watch TV or homework.
Maybe that was on purpose, Steve, because then they could see how the city runs.
I don't think they paid attention.
It's just that education.
Maybe it's against procedure too, I don't know.
I don't know either.
That's all I have. I'm going to go to the city clerk comments right now, and I'll come back to city commissioner comments, and I'm sure Kim would like to address that.
Yeah, just to comment on that, there is rules of procedure and how that has to happen. Unfortunately, they're tied behind two very large public hearings, so that does happen. You know, we have the ability sometimes to modify that, not always. One thing too, that wasn't noted or that they didn't say, but they were working towards a badge for the Girl Scouts on government, so I did warn them that this one might have been kind of a long one, and they were encouraged when I talked, or at least their leader was encouraged when I talked, but I said it could be a long one, so that does happen. But there are rules or structure to how we have to conduct the business, but.
Any other city clerk comments?
Not at this time that I can think of, so.
You're getting tired too.
Yeah.
Moving to city commissioner comments, Commissioner Nemec.
I have run out of words, Your Mayor.
Commissioner Boswick?
I just want to say that Commissioner Nemec and I did go and get the tour of the jail, and it isn't a pretty picture there, so I hope they can do something about it, so that's all I have.
Commissioner Gay?
Just one thing, I'm glad to see people getting involved with local government when there's something they either like or don't like. I would like to see more people here if they are in support of it. I understand, you know, some of the, some folks mentioned that people were afraid of upsetting their neighbor by showing up in support of an ordinance that, you know, their neighbor may not support, but as, you know, thanks, you know, Commissioner Nemec had a great idea, and I hope that works out, because that's how we can get together and figure out how to accomplish something and provide a solution to somebody else's problem at the same time. As the Mayor and I both noted, we attended the fire, a meeting with the volunteer firefighters, Sergeant Larson and Director Guyer, and that was kind of, that was pretty interesting as to the condition our, the old trucks in. We, I'm glad we're starting to at least pursue a way forward with replacing the old vehicle. The other truck is, I believe it was a 1996?
Yep.
1996, so the other truck's 18 years old, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Director Guyer told me that the older vehicles, like the 88, typically were in service for 20 years, and the newer ones, they're typically designed to last 25 to 30 years.
Better manufacturing processes, so if they're cared for, if we're maintaining the maintenance on the beer. Maintain the maintenance on the C2, it's just, it's just a, it's an old car truck.
Yeah. So that might be why you would want to go for more than one. No.
Well, that's, and that was an interesting, it was an interesting experience and bit of information. To EVIP III, we don't know what's going to go on. There's been a lot of discussion, there's a lot of, a lot of speculation as to what the governor's going to do. There's several things that have been thrown out there as far as outstanding liabilities, you know, levels of funding, which segues into the MERS funding. At some point, we're going to have to look real close, and we're going to have to significantly impact our funding level with MERS. If we're not, if we don't do it on our own, we're going to be forced to do it at the risk of losing shared revenue, so that's something that we really need to keep on our radar. And other than that, I hope everybody enjoyed the day. I know I did. It was hot outside. That's all I have.
Commissioner Matten?
A couple of things. I'm going to be attending the Legislative Capitol Conference next week in Lansing, and I'm going to have.
You'll be coming back with some state money?
Well, I'm going to be encouraging at least our legislators, both our Senator and our Representative McBroom and Senator Casperson. I'm going to have an audience with those folks and.
Feel free to take that article along with you.
I will, I will. It's a good article, I think it's great. You know, as we were talking about our budget tonight, and the $200,000 plus that we're short on our revenue sharing would have cured a lot of problems for us.
Oh, yeah.
And that money is owed to the local communities. They're basically stealing the money from us, there's no other way to put it. But we can't, we have to do, go about it differently than that. We need to encourage them to want to do the right things here. Also, our transportation funding. It's so ridiculous what's been going on with that. Since 1997, we have not had an increase in our road funding. And the fund balance that we have in the Electrical Department, if we don't get some road funding pretty soon, we may use that whole balance up just on our city streets. That's how serious it is. And we don't realize it because things are pretty good, but things can unravel in a short time, and so.
Well, the street goes really fast from a point where it can be repaired to it can't be repaired at all.
Correct, correct. And so, so this is much more serious than maybe the average person is aware of, but we really need to, as local politicians, really be talking to these folks in Lansing about this issue, because it is, it needs to be addressed. And so, I'm going to go down and plead our case the best I can with these folks and just encourage them to try to do something with these things. Something needs to be done to help us here, because we really don't have the ability at the local level to really do much with transportation funding, other than assess the people thousands of dollars to fix our streets, and I don't think anyone's going to really want that, you know. Let's see, the other thing is, I just wanted to make the commission aware that I was going to be gone for the next couple of meetings again. I apologize for this, but.
This is getting to be a habit.
I know, it's getting to be a habit. I will be around all the rest of the spring, summer, fall, and next winter.
Okay.
But, so I ask to be excused for the next two meetings.
Commissioner Boswick, you won't be at the next meeting also?
I'm going to be gone next meeting too.
I'll be here, Mr. Mayor, but I will be gone the first meeting in April.
April. All right, thank you. We've already decided we're looking into, possibly looking into disaster preparedness. I don't want to go over, you need to go over that. I continue to get, people contacted me and I ask them to be patient, because our staff, the ones I run into are really getting tired of winter, and they're getting really tired out, and they really don't want to work anymore overtime. Placemaking is key to fixing states' broken municipal finance system, municipal, that's what I keep bringing up on the DDA, and I want to continue to gently push the DDA towards doing more of the marketing for the community, because we can't do the marketing with our own funds and the DDA can, and the DDA has really been a good corporate partner of the city. Some communities, that's not true. This, ours is a very good corporate partner of ours. I attended a Delta Force meeting, got to tell everybody what it's like to be a city commissioner and a mayor. We've been doing the Teamsters negotiations, as the city manager said. I think it's going well. I think we're finding out our two positions. There could be some surprises in there, but I think it's still, I think it's going well. Went to the Volunteer Fire Department meeting, I'll reiterate, they, I think they felt like they weren't always welcome here, and I'm not sure exactly why that is, but I don't intend to have that continue, so was very happy to see them show up tonight and to get some support. Matt, Commissioner Gay and I met with two school board members on the old school bus garage. I think we had a very good meeting, mutual gain, so to speak, and getting some things on the table that needed to be taken, put on the table. Also met with the Public Safety Director and the Sergeant regarding our budget and where we're going. I think we made some progress on that tonight as well. I'd like to see more. I won't be able to be at the EDC meeting on Wednesday. I will be at DDA tomorrow, and.
EDC's tomorrow.
Yeah, EDC's at noon. I can be the DDA in the morning, but I can't be to the EDC meeting. And I believe I'll make it to the joint government meeting on Wednesday, but that's always open to other commissioners as well, and it's out on our website.
I'll be at the EDC meeting.
Very good.
Okay.
With that, I am done. We've done city clerk comments, so unless somebody has something else, I think we'll stand adjourned.[1783.12][1783.12]